Morning.
Morning.
Okay, now that we have you on, we're gonna call to order and if everybody would join us in prayer and pledge. Julie?
Dear Lord, thank you so much for blessing us with this glorious day. Please watch over us as we consider the agenda for constituents of Hillsdale County. Guide us and give us wisdom. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Our first call out to the public. Would anyone like to address the board at this time? Go ahead, Steph.
Can you take my mask off or can you hear me?
We, I can hear you fine.
Okay, so I'm bringing up Resolution 2066, the Broadspire payment.
Yes.
I just wanted to inform the board that there was a change back in October of last year. The medical care had to do a reevaluation of our percentage between the county and them.
Right.
Because the state asked them to do that. So it changed the percentage for the county to be the 56% and medical care 44%. So that's why they increased on the county portion. I think it used to be $3,870. Now it's $5,040. So just wanted to give an update on that. And how did Bruce know? Need to know that for the budget.
Did you talk, does Bruce already know about this?
No, this is the first one I'm telling.
Bruce?
Yeah?
Did you hear what Stephanie said?
Nope, didn't hear what I was saying.
Okay, she's talking about Broadspire.
Yeah, Broadspire.
Broadspire and the county is 56% and the medical care facility is 44%.
Which is an increase.
It's an increase. It's different than what we were told. It's an increase.
Not different than what you were told. It was just reevaluated. It's not. I just want to make you aware.
Got that, Bruce?
Yep.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. Anyone else wish to address the board at this time? We will have another public comment towards the end. Okay, thank you. We'll move along. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Correspondence is listed. Any comments on correspondence? Hearing no comments, regular agenda? Yes, Ruth?
Is it okay if we add to the regular agenda that we got an email about the MAC conference and there's a charge for it? And I wanted to talk about that, see if that's something we want to participate in. Is that okay?
We'll just put that, we can put that under you.
Okay. Thank you.
And we need to add Resolution 20-069. Since it's authorizing Bruce to sign the MIDC grant contract, you should have received that via email.
Yes, yesterday.
Since Bruce is not here, I will put it under my report because I know he's driving. It'd be hard for him to read it.
Right, yes.
So.
No, I, Mark, I got it over it now. I got my secretary standing here next to me.
Okay. Well, if you want to handle it as quick as we can get to you, then we'll let you do that. So.
Okay.
All right, sir. And also we'll move Bruce up so that he'll be the first committee to report. So with all that said, we've kind of gone out of order here, but we need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Move to approve as amended.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further changes or additions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor of the regular agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That brings us up to Mr. Duke.
Good morning, everybody.
You may, you may step up to the podium and.
I've got a few handouts.
Yes, if you would like.
It's been a while since I've been down to talk to you guys. I think it was back before 2010 was the last time I came down to discuss membership in Region 2. You guys were one of the original members of Region 2 Planning Commission and as I recall, that you dropped your membership back in the early 2000s when there were some financial issues. And so we haven't come back from that yet. First of all, I have been director of Region 2 for about 12 years now. I've got a total of 32 years in that Region 2 and I've got about 45 years in, if you can believe that, as a planner. On the handout that I gave you, there's a map on the front page that shows the different regional planning commissions around the state. These were formed under a state act back in 1945. There are 14 regional planning commissions. At the bottom there, you can see that the region we're in is Region 2, which is Jackson, Hillsville, and Lenawee Counties. The biggest in terms of population is the Semcog Region, which is adjacent to us, to the media east. And the largest one would be Region 7, which includes the Flint-Savannah area. Two-thirds of the jurisdictions in our three-county area belong to Region 2 Planning Commission. On the next page is a map that shows our three-county regions. The hash lines are the counties that belong both Jackson and Hillsdale, Jackson and Lenawee Counties have been longtime members of Region 2 Planning Commission. As you can see, the majority of the jurisdictions in both Lenawee and Hillsdale belong to Region 2. Over the years, there's been a number of jurisdictions within Hillsdale County that have decided to join Region 2 on their own. That would include the cities of Jonesville and Hillsdale, as well as a number of townships and villages belong as well to. Membership dues for Region 2 Planning Commission are about 27 cents per capita. Those have not changed in over 20 years. Hillsdale County's dues, we're on a fiscal year that starts October 1st and runs through September 30th. That's the federal fiscal year. Our dues have remained the same, like I said, over the past 20 years. Hillsdale County's 2021 dues would be $12,605. You get two-thirds of that money back in terms of services from Region 2 Planning Commission. So you would get back about $8,400 in terms of services that we could provide to you in planning services. That money can also accumulate. So if you have a major project that you want to do, like a master plan or a recreation plan, you can save up your dues for a couple of years and that may be enough to pay for the recreation plan. Most of the jurisdictions in our three-county area cannot afford a planning staff. So we have served as a circuit writer with planning staff for the past 50 years. We supervise and manage the county commission's staffs, county commissions in both Lenawee and Jackson Counties. So we send out the agendas. We take the minutes. We do recommendations, the whole shebang for both of those counties. We also attend several of our local member agency jurisdictions' planning commission meetings and as needed. They request our services and we come down and we either make recommendations on zoning ordinance changes. We assist them if they want that in terms of master plan, recreation plan, any type of planning activities they want us to work on, zoning ordinance updates. It's on an as-needed basis. For many of them, like I said, they can't afford it. The way it works, let's say for instance, Jonesville pays $5,000 annually dues and they want to do a rec plan that's going to cost $7,000. So normally what we do is we write a contract for the additional money above and beyond their dues. Or like I said, they could save their money up and have two years where their dues go toward their new recreation plan. Any questions? You have a question?
I'm just here to take minutes.
Oh, okay. I thought you, I thought you had a question. I looked on your page.
I do, but I'm just here to take minutes.
Okay. And what we do for these areas, we provide recommendations on rezoning cases. We work with developers to help them get their plans in order to go with their planning commissions. We also review Public Act 116, which are the farm land agreements. Those must also be reviewed by your planning commission. We do many master plans throughout the three-county area. We do recreation plans. We fill out grant applications for people and we also do hazard mitigation plans. We're also doing one of those right now for Jackson County. These plans must be updated in order for you to be eligible for a number of state and federal grant awards. So if you don't have an updated master plan or an updated rec plan, which is every five years, you're not eligible to apply for a lot of these grants that are available at the state. And even though Hillsdale County has not been a member of Region 2 all these years, we do a number of things down here through MDOT. We're like MDOT staff for all three counties. We do, every year we go out and rate the pavement condition of all the federal aid roads in the three-county area. We do that for you in conjunction with your road commission. We also staff your rural task force. Can I pull this down? Is that okay?
Yeah, you're fine.
We also, we also staff and manage your rural task force. The state allocates dollars each year from the federal government to each rural county in the state. And the amount of money that you get in Hillsdale County is about $800,000 a year. We organize those meetings because everybody in the county is eligible for those funds, which is your road commission, your villages, cities. Anybody that receives Act 51 money is eligible for the rural task force funds. So we organize those meetings. We solicit projects and we prioritize those projects with the assistance of your county government officials and the public. And then we submit that for you. We also do the small urban program for Hillsdale and Jonesville urbanized area. That's another pot of money that the state allocates to small urban areas under $50,000. You are guaranteed a project every other year. So every other year, either the cities of Jonesville, city of Hillsdale, or your road commission, which manages the roads in the urbanized area, they are eligible for a road project, which amounts to about $350,000. And we work with the municipalities to solicit all the projects, again, run the meetings, take the minutes, and help them come up with a list of projects that we submit to the state. It's usually a three-year future list of projects. Let's see. In 2010, the three-county area was designated an economic development district by the Economic Development Administration. What that does is make us eligible for grants to private businesses and jurisdictions in this three-county area to apply for grants from the EDA. That could be a sewer grant, commercial development, or road grant. Right now, Jackson County has applied for funds through the EDA to build a new industrial park and to make improvements to the road in front of the industrial park. That was eligible for these funds because they are within our three-county economic development district. Now, even though Hillsdale does not pay dues, we still conclude you guys as part of the process. And if you were to have projects in this area, they are also eligible because you have been included in our three-county economic development district. And we also just received a two-year grant from the EDA to provide COVID recovery activities for businesses within the three-county area. That started July 1st. We hired a new economic development planner. He starts at the end of this month. And he'll be working with economic development offices in all three counties, including Sue back here, to help these businesses access loans and grants that are available through the federal and state government for recovery from the COVID. So that is my spiel. So if you have any questions, or Doug, Doug is here. Doug is the city manager from Hills, Litchfield, and he is the chair of our board. And Sue Smith, we've worked with quite a bit over the past 50 years, or how many years has it been? It's been a lot of years.
That was Sue.
But Sue's been very helpful to Region 2 and we work cooperatively with a number of agencies down here already, so.
So Steve, I had a question, if I may, Mr. Chairman. The two-year grant program, if I may correct me, for the COVID relief fund that you receive from the EDA, what roughly is the amount that we're looking at?
We've got $400,000 for a two-year period.
Okay. And so these are the allocations. So how much per business?
It's not that way. Like, they gave us some money to hire staff. And what we're doing is we're setting up a website that all businesses can access that gives them all the information in terms of the loans that are available, the grants that are available, what you need to be able to apply for these applications. We'll assist you with that. It also gives you leads to professionals that you can also contact for assistance on this. It would be then up to the business to locate the loans or grants that are available through our website participation. But our staff planner will be out working with all three of the local economic development offices. And you guys also applied for and received additional CARES Act or COVID money as well too. So we can work cooperatively to maybe point out some of the areas that are in need of funding and then they can work with the local EDOs to get that funding.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question, please? So you spoke a little bit about the five-year recreation plan. We've been wanting to, through our PERC system, to apply for DNR grants, which are, you know, very comprehensive grants. Can you speak a little bit more toward the, what you could help us with as far as that recreation plan and our likelihood of maybe qualifying for the DNR grants?
We do a lot of recreation plans. Grant Valman in our office works on those. And Navaradas had a lot of experience working with grants over the years. Your recreation plan has to be up to date. It means it can't be expired. You have a five-year time period for your rec plan. And in that rec plan, you would list potential projects that you want to fund, okay? And so what the state does, they take your recreation plan and then look at that to see if that project is listed in your plan before you are eligible to even apply for grant funding. We can write the, we can write the recreation plan or we can update an existing plan. The plan is your plan. So he'll be working with a board or your rec board, for instance, which I believe is the road commission, right?
Road commission, yes.
He would work with them, as well as the public, to develop a recreation plan for you. It would go through all the public reviews and he makes sure that it meets all the criteria in order to be eligible to be approved by the state before you can proceed to the grant process part of it. We've written a number of grants for the city of Jackson and the Jackson County Department of Transportation. And he's been successful in getting a lot of those. He's got good experience and he knows what they're looking for. He's got a reputation up there. And I think that he works well with them in order to get the applications done correctly.
That's right.
You asked me one more question after that.
Well, just, we haven't applied for any DNR grants or things like that in a really long time. Does it give us maybe a better chance at?
Definitely, definitely. Because a lot of these grant funds are distributed around the state geographic. So what they're going to do is when they get an application, let's say from Hillsdale County, they're going to say, gee, we haven't given a grant to Hillsdale County in 25 years. You're going to be, you're going to be the top of the list to get the grant money. A lot of the grants come in from like the Detroit area, Grand Rapids area. But the state doesn't want to award all their money to those two metro areas. So they set aside an amount of money to go to a lot of the smaller urban, smaller urban or the rural areas as well too. So your chances for a lot of the grants that you may apply for right now are probably pretty good if you have not submitted any grant applications for a number of years. The transportation also hands out grants called TEDF grants or Technical Assistance Grants. And those would be like for non-motorized paths, trails, downtown improvements, that type of thing. Those are also eligible through MDOT. And we fill out those applications if you need assistance on those as well too.
Are we missing out on those right now?
Oh, yeah.
Are you a non-member?
No. Well, you would be missing out as a member because we would not be eligible to work. We don't do work for agencies or jurisdictions that aren't members of Region 2. But like I said, two-thirds of the jurisdictions eligible for Region 2 membership are members of Region 2 and have been for a number of years. And every year, we pick up one or two more jurisdictions. We have not lost any membership over the time that I've been in Region 2, so.
So Steve, on that rec plan, the assistance we get from Region 2 for developing that, does, does that come out of our dues money? I mean, is that all part of that package? So there's not an additional cost?
Well, let's say your rec plan's going to cost $10,000. Because Grant will prepare an estimate ahead of time for you to approve. And right now, you would have $8,400 coming in terms of services from Region 2 with your $12,000 dues. The other, one-third of those dues, we use to do work that benefits the entire three-county area. So for instance, when marijuana became the big thing, we wrote a marijuana sample ordinance or example. And we provided that to all our jurisdictions. So they needed to update their zoning ordinance to include marijuana facilities. They all have a sample ordinance to work on. So one-third goes to that and two-thirds always goes back to the marijuana.
Okay. So I got a couple more quick questions for you. So you're on a fiscal year that starts October 1. So if we were to join that, when would the 2021?
That's our 2021 fiscal year.
Right. So when would 2021 be due?
Well, she usually sends, our secretary usually sends out notices sometime in October. And we usually give you until December to get your dues in, so.
Okay. Because where I'm going is we don't have it in the budget currently. And so that's why I asked that question.
Lenawee County and Jackson County are both on calendar year budgets. So for instance, we get part of the money in their one fiscal year and then we get the other part of it in their other fiscal year. So that's how they usually split it up.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sure we can discuss that because we're on a calendar year as well.
A big part of what we do for those two counties is staff their planning commissions. I don't know how your planning commission works, but a lot of those people don't have a lot of experience in planning. I think Jackson County has a pretty good planning commission, probably because there's just more professionals in the area that have a concept of what's going on. But, you know, Grant does a very thorough job on that. And it's up to you how you, how you want to use us. Do you want to use us just to take the minutes, send out the notices, and provide a staff person there to answer questions? Or we can also make recommendations on any zoning ordinance requests you get in. The way it works in Jackson County, all the master plans, zoning ordinance amendments, all come to the planning commission for approval. Or a recommendation, for instance. And the planning commission doesn't carry any weight. But they all submit their plans to us and there's some changes. And then we make a recommendation. It's up to the township or the jurisdiction either take our recommendation or go ahead and do what they want to do. So it's a voluntary kind of operation. But it's worked very well in Jackson and Lenawee Counties.
So I see you've got in here your meeting schedule and executive committee and such. So if we were to join, there'd be a commissioner or two commissioners or what?
For everybody that joins Region 2, you get a membership on our board. For every 10,000 population, you get a commissioner. So you would have, what, three, four commissioners, right? Four commissioners on Region 2, yes. Four commissioners on Region Two, yes.
Okay, so we have four eligible seats.
Well, yes, and actually, the original bylaws specify certain number of commissioners for each county, but that all changed back 15 years ago when Hillsdale dropped out. But you would have four commissioners for your dues, right?
Okay.
Yeah, forty-six thousand right now.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, come really quickly. I've had experience, because I've worked really closely with the Region Two back from 2007, those days, feels like yesterday, with Hudson and Linnaway, and so that's how the representation goes. And the same thing goes on with, right now, that I'm currently serving with our Somerset Township. A lot of legwork that we have done in our planning commission, if I may, Mr. Chairman, into our township. And then we go ahead and we submit all the legwork that we've done with our planning commission, with our master plan. If you see, Somerset Township is a population of 4,600 some odd, roughly, and the kind of work that we've put in, and we've sent it to the Region Two, and we've decided to be a part of Region Two as a township, because again, of the availability of grants. Not every township does it, but again, like I said, the new implementation with the ordinances, zoning. Like I said, and I reiterate, the legwork was a lot put in by our own county officials, our own planning commission that I sit on, but the recommendations were also sent by the Region Two, so that makes it more concrete with the availability of the grants and so on and forth. So, and again, like, you know, Mr. Duke did talk about that the return, the two-thirds of it that gets back to us would be like $8,400 that he was talking about. So there's a lot of work as an urban program, and the guaranteed projects that can be put in place, a road commission, again, the effort that the Region Two puts with the organized meeting and stuff, all of that. Again, like the EDA, he mentioned about the two-year recovery program, which we didn't know about, or they just came about within the COVID issues that we were dealing with. So again, all that infrastructure and the remarkable work that they put in. And I know not every county participates. I know Hillsdale hasn't for a long time, and Linnaway has, Jackson, of course, has. And so again, the fiscal year does start from October 1st and goes on to September 30th. And he did mention about the fact that 20 cents, 27 cents per capita. So those are some of the things that, you know, we want to look at it and see how to proceed further. And again, there is a lot of possibility with the grant money with, again, a lot of other things, like I just touched base, not to forget to mention what Mr. Duke did bring to the table today. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
I can add one point to this, too. I heard that some counties wonder why we're charging jurisdictions within the county membership dues when the county is paying membership dues. That's because we do work for all these different jurisdictions. So if the county got to pay the dues for everybody, there wouldn't be enough money at all to do work for like Somerset and all these other jurisdictions. And a lot of the dues that the smaller areas pay, it's not very much money. It's maybe a thousand or $2,000. But over the years, our reputation has helped us, and to hire a consultant to do a master plan or recreation plan, it's going to cost a lot more than having us do it. It's going to take a lot more time. You may get a really, really fancy glossy product when you're done, but, and ours are nice products as well, too. But what's good is Grant knows the ins and outs, and there's a lot of legalities that have to be in those plans. Same thing with planning commissions for zoning. There's a lot of technicalities in that to address the Michigan Enabling Legislation, and he knows all that information, so you're not making a bunch of mistakes at your planning commission that have to go back and be rectified afterwards, so.
Well, let me regress back, and I think I asked, you know, as far as the rec plan and the cost. So if the rec plan costs us $10,000, we get back $8,400 in service, we owe an additional $1,600. When, when or how do we pay that?
We would just invoice you. And it may not be that. The estimate is one thing. Let's say it only costs $8,400 when we're done.
Right.
That's all you're going to get charged.
Okay.
So, yeah, we invoice usually every couple of months, so.
Okay, okay. I'm going to think of something I need to maybe dwell on and bring it up at the next meeting.
We were down here all the time. Our board meetings circulate through the three-county area, so every third meeting is in Hillsdale County, and usually meet at City Hall. So you're welcome to come to any of those meetings as well, too. If you'd like to get on our mailing list, we can do that as well, and have you an agenda sent to you each month, so.
I think that'd be good. I mean, right now, if you would, put us on the mailing list, and then we can, that might help us to.
Want me to have sent to you or to your clerk?
To the clerk would be fine, and then she can put it in the packet.
Give that to him.
Yeah.
That's really good.
Any more questions for Steve?
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for inviting me down.
Thanks, Duke, for coming. Thanks.
Okay, gives us something to chew on.
Right, to chew, exactly.
Plus I get to. We can think of more questions and contact Sue and Darian. Mr. Darian, Sue will be good, good local input, so. All right, thank you. All right, we'll get moving on to committee reports. Bruce, you still there?
Yep.
You're on.
Resolution 20069, the annual board of commissioners. We authorize Commissioner Caswell to sign the MIDC Michigan Independent Defense Commission grant contract for fiscal year October 1, 2020 through November 30, 2021. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Caswell, I move to the adoption of this amendment, of this resolution.
Support.
Okay, any comments or questions? It was emailed out in its entirety. There's about thirty pages to the whole thing.
That's right.
If there's no questions, all those in favor of 20-069, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, please continue.
Derek, did anything reporting one of their workers who is working from home that contracted COVID? He was in the office for one day. They're putting in place all they need to have in order to take care of that situation. We need to decide, we need to decide probably at the next meeting what we're going to do with MERS, whether we're going to withdraw, start that process, or whether we're going to stay, whether we should pay extra money. We need to get that decided and taken care of, so we can get that up. There are CDBD grants available due to statements through the CARES Act. Our porting of that is $220,790, and it's for the personal protection equipment. All the shields that we put up, all that money is available. I sent the mail that I got on it to Derek. There will be a webinar, one webinar each for the next two weeks that he could look into on how we get that money, but that's the allocation, and given associate accounting. So all of the PPC equipment, everything that we had to purchase, moving things. The shields we'll put up in all the offices, all that will be paid for and taken care of. And we will not have to apply to rest of through the PMA grant. Got a third quarter report on the public defender and everything that's going along swimmingly. They're doing a very good job. Everybody's getting a lawyer that's a lawyer, and they're all having lawyers, very beginning, and Tim Berger did a nice job with them. We have, I have here a COVID-19-related unbudgeted accounting expenditure. And I believe this $220,000 that I was talking about that we're eligible for. And we can use it to purchase, distribute personal protection equipment, purchase nanotink equipment, telehealth equipment, to allow assisted residents access, COVID-19 testing costs, setup of quarantine sites. We can pay for reimbursement for overtime costs for staff related to COVID. Yes, bear with me. And also, this thing will cover hazard pay. Now, one of the issues that we've been dealing with with hazard pay is wondering whether or not we're going to get it. And I'll get to that in a minute with another pile of money that's available. The money will be available once the grant agreement has been executed and all the previous first requirements have been met. So Derek will learn about all that when he looks into the webinar, and will be able to access this money, and he can get more specifics as far as what we can use it on, but we're, we'll be in good shape in that regard. Rugs fire, I asked Derek to look into how much. They estimate we're going to have to continue to pay the rest of this year, and they figured that we've got about $240,000 of additional costs to look forward to for our workers' comp, that deputies hurt really bad. And we have that outside to the pot, so that won't, that won't be a problem in terms of the budget. Okay, I wanted to mention, I had a constituent approach me, and I wanted to mention for the clarification of the general public and for the commissioners. This individual came to me and said that after we passed the resolution to fully fund the pension over the next 20 years, he was very upset that there were commissioners in the past, or current commissioners, that had not properly, had not properly funded the pension, and now we're using this windmill line to bail ourselves out. And I explained to him that every commission for the last 30 years has put into the pension plan exactly what we were told to put in by the administrator of the plan, Berbers. The county has never, under any set of circumstance, ever shorted that pension fund. We paid everything we were told to pay. The problem is administrator program, Berbers, used faulty reasoning and assumptions and didn't tell us that we had to pay more. They were giving us kind of a song and a dance. And I explained that to him, and he was satisfied with that, put up. So to the general public, there's no chicanery that's going on with this commission or any other commission that will last 30 years. Everything has been fully funded as we were told to fund it. Next, of the pots of money, we learned a week ago through Matt and the webinar, and I might add that Matt has done an absolutely fantastic job in keeping everyone up to date on the pots of money that are available under the CARES Act. We learned that we would be able to replace salaries for deputy corrections officers, janitors, who've been cleaning the building, and Derek, I think, got a couple more. But we'll be able to replace those salaries, but we had to have everything done and turned in by this Friday. And we learned about this a week, last Friday, last Thursday, I guess. Derek has completed it, and his estimate to me this morning was that we were going to be able to recover about $600,000 to cover the salaries of those individuals, and covers salaries, benefits, and fringes, all of that. So I think that's a huge help to us in terms of being able to financially weather this whole storm. This was a pot of money, it's around $200 million. If there is money left over in this pot, in the big counties, Kent, McComb, Wayne, and City, Detroit, cannot get any money from this pot. They got their own money from this facility. But if there's any money left in this pot, there will, there will be a second round. We can apply for the second round. Now, this covers what Derek's going to be submitting, covers April and May. We will also be, if there's money in the second round, to cover June and July. So that's that question, and that's extremely good news. That would be very helpful. The hazard pay is another pot of money in Senate Bill 690. The hazard pay is only for pay. It does not cover fringes, it does not cover Medicare, Medicaid, or Medicare costs, or retirement costs, or anything else. It's only for the pay. But this $220,000 pot through the MIB that I just described to you apparently also covers hazard pay, so we'll have to pick one place or the other to get it from. We will have to pay, if we get the hazard pay out of this Senate Bill 690, we will have to pay the hazard pay by September 10th. And we will not be assured of getting the money until November 14th. The position that the Senate bill has put us in is pay the money and pray. And the pile of money that I described to you at the beginning of this discussion is money that we can access and use for that hazard pay that may be much more dependable, and that we can count on. So Derek, again, Derek's going to look into that. I think that's the situation with the pots of money. We are registered on the federal system. Don Sanford got that done for us a long time ago, and to access a lot of these pots of money, we're going to have to be registered on that system. So we're all set there. I learned yesterday that the August revenue sharing check that the state cuts us, that's supposed to come in August, obviously, will not be coming. We will not get any of that money. That total throughout the state for the counties, that amounts to about $97 million. Derek can give you the specifics as to what ours will be. However, that money is going to be replaced with COVID money, and the COVID money is going to amount to $150 million. Now, we will be able to apply for that COVID money, and this is another pot, $150 million. We'll be able to apply for it, but it will be restricted in what it can be used for. So again, we've got to jump through the hoops. So what the legislature's trying to do with this $150 million, they knew the revenue sharing was going away, that's what this state's general fund money, but they're trying to replace it with COVID money that's restricted. So we're going to have to be really ingenious on how we apply it, and what it can be applied to, and so on. When the budget is done up to Lansing, we will get information on how to apply and then, and what we can pay for it. So that information is not yet available, but it will be once the budget is done, okay? They don't have any separate legislature yet, so that's another pot of money. So Derek is doing an absolutely fabulous job in keeping all these pots separate and getting things turned in on time. And Matt has done a wonderful job in terms of keeping us informed and letting us know what's going on with their particular situation. The only other thing that I've got is, we got the information from reading emergency unit on their second quarter, I guess it is, and their, and this isn't a negative statement, it's not a positive statement, it's just a statement of fact. Their attrition rate and their workers is about 22% from the beginning of the year. They started off with about 31 workers. They've lost seven. Obviously, they fired people to replace them, but they've lost seven people, and that comes out to an attrition rate of about 22%. I don't know if that's good or bad compared to other ankle services around the state. But it's good to have that information, and that's one of the things that Commissioner Gaines, and I pass forward contracts where we would have an idea of what was going on in terms of turnover, and just begin with it. So with that, do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
Well, at the very beginning, he said something about someone contracted COVID, and he cut out, and I didn't get who contracted COVID, or what department was he talking about, or what was that about?
Did you hear that? Go ahead, Ruth.
What did that, Mark, can you repeat it?
The question that Ruth had was, when you started, you cut out a little bit. You were talking about there was a case or an exposure of COVID, one of our departments?
No, at the area agency, they had a worker who has tested positive for COVID.
Okay.
The worker was working from home, and last week, they were in the office just one day. But they're putting in place the protocols they need to do in order to check everybody else out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. So you said that was region two on aging?
No, the area agency, well, whatever.
Area, yeah, AAA. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Bruce?
So the thing that I want all of you to keep in mind is we got a pot of money through the M E D C or COVID-related expenses that can cover lots of things. It can cover equipment as well as other things. And we haven't had any pots that have covered equipment. So that will do that. It can also potentially cover hazard pay and be probably a much surer thing. We've got a second pot that Derek is submitting this week to give us reimbursement for paying during the months of April and May, the frontline workers. That's a second pot. We've got a third pot out of Senate Bill 690 that's quite restricted, quite frankly, that will provide money for hazard pay. We cannot hit the hazard pay twice. If we pay hazard pay out of the first pot, the $220,000, we won't be able to get it under the Senate Bill 690. You can't double dip. Okay? And then the last pot that we're talking about potentially is FEMA. And FEMA money you would have to apply for, we would have to apply for through a grant process. We're all signed up for it and we can apply, it's just a matter of whether we need to go in that direction. It's a little bit more work than is involved in just getting these grants that are out there available right now. And again, I wanted to say Derek has done an absolute fabulous job and stayed on top of this stuff. And MAC has done a wonderful job in keeping us informed. Everything that comes down the plate, they're letting us know about.
I would agree with you, Bruce. Derek is, and Derek's not up here right now. Of course, I know he's working pretty hard to get all these things put together. And I do know from what I've read and from what you and I and Derek have talked about, double dipping is something they're watching for, or at least they say they're going to watch for fairly closely. So, you know, we've got to adhere to the rules. But I think as long as we stay on top of it, we should get at least some of these dollars.
We'll get quite a few of these dollars, I believe, Mr. Chairman, quite a few. Now, Derek, I asked Derek if he had prepared the monthly statement on our budget and so on. And he said, no, he hasn't. And I said, don't worry about it, get this other stuff in. He worked all weekend on this payroll replacement. He worked at home. So you don't have that today, and that's the reason why. And as long as he's out there and we're applying for him, and he has to do quite a bit of work, he's pretty well taken up with that.
Pretty important task, so we can live without that monthly analysis. So any other questions for Bruce at this time? Okay. Well, you're welcome to listen, or you can tune us off since you're driving.
When Marnie sent me the information for the meeting, there was no email that got that had any attachment on it with all the stuff and everything. Are there any other resolutions that we're going to be voting on?
No, there is not.
Okay. All right, well, we're getting close to Lansing, so I will cut out, take off, please forgive me, but hopefully we'll get my wife back in good running order here, Captain.
Keep me on our prayers, Bruce.
Yep.
And Beth.
Yep. All right. Good luck. Thank you. All right. So Ruth, that brings us up to you.
Okay. Okay, so on July 9th, I think it was, on your email, I think we all got something about the MAC conference on July 9th that came on your email.
Yep.
The August conference is going to be virtual this year.
Thank you.
And so I just wanted to bring it up because I think it's $50. It says, it says something about $50, and I thought that was for all of us. Is that right?
That's the way I took it.
The conference registration fee is only $50 for members, which includes all county officials.
I don't know, though. I really think it's $50 a person. But I could be interpreting it wrong, but I took it as $50 a person.
It's not very clear.
Can somebody check that out? The registration date's August 7th, when we have to register by. And the dates of the conference are August 18th to August 27th. So I just wanted to bring that up.
But it's all, that's all virtual.
Right, all virtual. Right.
Would Marnie call about that? She usually handles.
Is Marnie busy right now?
That kind of stuff, or do you want us to?
Marnie is really busy right now.
Yeah.
Election training and everything going on.
I think you can.
Can you check that out, too?
I think you can reply to that email, Ruth, and just ask them if that's 50 per, or if it's 50 for the whole.
Can you check that out, Julie?
Yeah, I will.
Find out if that's per person or what the deal is on that, please. Thank you. Okay. We had a Michigan Works Southeast Michigan Consortium Board meeting in June, June 23rd. And Julie and I are on that. It's a two-person board. And what happened was is their vice chair was Commissioner Dolan from Livingston County who died. So that made an opening for a vice chairperson for their board. So I nominated Julie, and Julie got it. So she's the new vice chair for the Southeast Michigan Consortium Board. So I thought that was really good for her and for Hillsdale County. And then on the Lifeways Board, there was a recipient rights advisory and an appeals training. And I'm on recipient rights for Lifeways. And so I did the training and I got my certificate of completion. It was kind of an extensive training. It's just recipient rights, appeals, and advisory is what it is. So I did that and I got that done.
Good job, Ruth.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So unless there's any questions, that's my report. Human Services Network is not meeting this summer. I don't believe they're meeting this summer, so there's no Human Services Network meeting. When I get stuff on email that I think's important, then I just forward it to you guys. So I'm doing things that way. They mainly are sending stuff out in regards to food pantries and where people can get food. So unless there's any questions, that's my report.
Commissioner Brown, I have a question. In regards with Lifeways, there's an email that came in regards with a resignation on the board. So are we going to take care of that at some point?
Mark will.
Oh, okay. Oh, it's in his. Okay, oh, sorry, didn't see that.
It's okay.
Thank you.
We'll get there.
Okay.
The question is, isn't Bruce already on the board?
Yes.
Yeah.
So. Bruce is on Lifeways.
Right, so.
Mark will talk about it when we get to Mark's.
We can bring it up now. I'm fine with that.
Sorry, didn't mean to take it earlier.
That's fine. I mean, it doesn't matter whether we do it now or 10 minutes from now.
Okay, Mark.
So you saw the letter that I had Marnie send out in regards to Lifeways. And yes, Bruce is currently on the board. He also fits the category of.
Family.
Yeah, it's secondary consumer is what he fits. And that's what Al's been, a secondary consumer. So the appointments on the Lifeways Board, with the exception of the commissioner appointments, are specific to the usage. And that's not controlled, that's controlled more at the state level as far as what the makeup strategy is.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
So the letter that was written, Mary Beth and Karen sent out, they would like to see Bruce be appointed to Al's spot. And then we would have to appoint another commissioner to fill the second commissioner's seat, okay?
We don't have to.
We don't have to, no, no.
We can.
We can.
But we don't have to.
So I've discussed it with Bruce at some length, and he's okay with doing that because that would also allow him to continue serving even after he's no longer a commissioner, okay? In that secondary consumer role. So I haven't had an opportunity to talk to Mary Beth much, and I intend to. And part of the reason is, is because we've all got lots of committees. I have a little bit of an interest in perhaps taking that second commissioner's seat myself, unless somebody else wants it. But to be transparent, if you will, we really need to post that, post Al's position. And so at that time, Bruce will fill out the paperwork just like anybody else and probably you did the last.
Ruth did.
Okay. I was trying to remember who Julie and who did. But so I'd probably have Julie and Ruth do the interviews again because I would assume there'd be more than one, but maybe Bruce is the only advocate for secondary consumer because it is a pretty specific.
That's right.
You know? So that's kind of where we're at on the whole thing. I'll make a note of trying to get a hold of Mary Beth here in the next couple of days and talk to her personally as far as, you know, as far as, you know, the commissioner appointment and what our plans are for posting it and probably get it posted here within the next week or two.
Sure. Mark, tomorrow night's the Lifeways Board meeting, and it's in Hillsdale, on Care Drive at Lifeways.
What's that?
Tomorrow night at 7:00.
Okay.
Okay?
That'd be a good opportunity for me to get my feet wet.
Now, this is a family member. It's a family member, Mark.
What's a family member?
To complete Mr. Ringenberg's term is, the capacity of the individual selected to complete Mr. Ringenberg's term must be a family member.
Right.
And Bruce is.
The consumer.
Well, that's why they say it's a secondary consumer. But yeah, yeah. But it's a family member and he fits that with Kevin.
Right, correct.
Yeah, exactly.
Sounds good.
So anyways, that's where that's at. And I appreciate you asking.
Yeah, not a problem.
And I don't have a problem with bringing it up.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay. But so that's off, that's off the list now.
Sure, thanks, Mr. Chairman, for that clarification. Appreciate it.
But I'll keep you informed. And you said that meeting's in?
Tomorrow night at 7:00 on Care Drive at Lifeways, on Care Drive.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments for Ruth? Okay. Namorada, that brings us up to you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, for that. And so we've been very busy. District 5 has been considerably very busy, couple of good weeks. And like I said, our townships have been busy, so have the committees been. All my township board meetings have been happening regularly. Like I said, Pittsford is one of them that does not operate electronically. And so yesterday was the Pittsford Township meeting, and nothing much on the table other than just one thing to highlight that they've been working on their zoning ordinance lately concerning a lot of issues as it relates with greenhouses or slash marijuana. So that's been a great topic of concern for that particular township. Moving forward, we did have the medical examiner investigator team meet. And it was met in person in Adrian. And I'm here to tell you that the transition to the morgue has been finally completed. As you know, the deadline was August 1st, the first week of August, they were going to transition the entire morgue facility to Jackson Elm Road. And because ProMedica had been doing it for years and the morgue department at ProMedica was used by all the three counties, the Lenaway, Hillsdale, and Jackson, by the medical examiners. And but then again, as they decided to finish off that contract with the medical examiner investigation, this transition was successful to Jackson. So now Sarah Palamani, if you do know her, she is now the coordinator of all the three counties for the Lenaway County, Hillsdale, and Jackson County. And Dr. Kason has been very impressed by this entire transition. We still work very closely with the MOMs, like I said, in Hillsdale County, I'll talk for Hillsdale County. MOMs is the month of the morgue, is what they say. It's called MOMS. They are the ones who do all the transitioning of our autopsy bodies to the facility. Now, Hillsdale County, for us, is cost effective still, nothing much changes because the distance that we used to do from Hillsdale County all the way to Lenaway, which is Adrian, is the same as from here to Jackson County. So we haven't, you know, been looking at any other costs other than just the normal distancing. So that was completed. And so all the autopsies and everything are started to conduct June 1st week. That's how, the June 1st week was the week they decided to have that complete transition. So they're ahead of time. So we're very, very happy to hear that. And now that facility, if I may, I always like to talk a little bit about the facility. I had a chance to see the facility. It's a very big facility, very well ventilated, great lighting. That facility in Jackson, the morgue, is fairly new, if I may, just about nine months old. So again, the lighting is fantastic for all the autopsy study. And like I said, I have been very privileged to sit through the autopsy studies. It takes special courage, but it's really nice to bring back onto the table of the Board of Commissioners and our taxpayers of what exactly our medical examiners do for our county bringing closures to the family. Not only that, the role the law enforcement and the Sheriff Department plays throughout this whole role with the investigation is just phenomenal. Cannot thank them enough. And so moving forward, moving forward, we had some news from the 911 Central Dispatch. Out of all the busy schedule the governor has had, she had some time to sign the S B 690, the particular form, our bill, if I may, approving the hazard pay for first responders and including the law enforcement and 911 Central Dispatch. And if you will, it's been a push. And like I said, it's a first come, first basis. So as you must know, the ETSB Board that I serve humbly is a liaison to that particular board. I'm hearing good talks about it, that they've been pushing it for it, to veil it, obviously for our frontline folks. So we're very privileged. So we're just waiting on. So this was a 690. This particular bill was approved for hazard pay for first responders, which includes the law enforcement, 911 dispatchers. And again, both of the unions of the Central Dispatch are aware of this and they're pushing really hard. So we're getting close to it and it will be a success to receiving that. Moving forward, yesterday I received a letter of retirement from our sheriff, Sheriff Parker. And, you know, didn't realize that his retirement effective date that he has put is August 7th of this year. And I did not realize that the days pass by faster than one can imagine, especially on an election year. And I must say that I had to write a letter back to him in regards, thanking him for the learning curve for me, not only as a woman, but as an ordinary public servant, for me to work as District 5 under his great platform was just immense. And it's just really, it's benefited not only our county, but our District 5 in its entirety. Couple of things and concerns that I Couple of things and concerns that I always like to bring back to the table is, you know, and I've talked about it a little bit earlier, gave it a lot of thought, the planning that has gone in with, you know, the MERS and the retirement plan, whether or not to withdraw it or to pursue. I think if we don't have any other plan in place of it, I think we should not withdraw the MERS. Because again, when we have this as a concrete MERS, it works very closely with the government entity. If it's worked for us, worked for, especially look at the Sheriff Department, law enforcement. They're always putting their families aside, attributing unconditional service, you see, for time away from their family and children, unto the service it provides. So I think if we have a good plan with MERS, we should stick with it. And that's really important. A couple of other things that I had been looking on, a lot of conversation, a lot of talks from constituents and the worry about, you know, the topic of defunding the law enforcement. And I had a brief meeting with the Sheriff Department a few days back. I like to, time and again, like to go and encourage them as a board liaison and to see what the needs are and just basically to get a good understanding of what's going on. The topic of defunding the law enforcement, though, which has been a big talk, is not something, is not an option for us. Let me be very clear. I don't want to see it as, you know, as long as I see humanity and existence in our county here, I think that we need to fight all of this. Just the thought of defunding the police, the law enforcement, or the Sheriff Department is never going to be an option. And these are things as a local officer, we should be fighting for. And a couple of other things, you know, the concern that concerns me is the constant maintenance for the jails and the maintenance, just the work that has just been always, you know, a priority because it's a 24-by-7 run entity. And obviously, you know, we need to keep up with it. I would like to see for us to have a separate budget in the line item for just the maintenance for the Sheriff Department in 2021, if you may, so that those things can be addressed, you know, ASAP. Like I said, and I'll reiterate again, it's a 24-by-7 operation. And again, those couple of improvement plans, like something that we'd like to see. If you have noticed, which I noticed, the front part of the facade, of the brick facade right in front of the Sheriff Department, that is in need of work. And I think that is something, if we can put it into our capital improvement plan, is my earnest request, along with the maintenance plan, that is always going to be an ongoing issue. It does not work like the courthouse or like our buildings here. Jail is a jail, it always needs maintenance and work. So those are a couple of things that I wanted to bring to the table. We'd like to see our offices work. They love their job, I know, I can tell. We'd like to retain our officers, we value them. Like I said, you know, they've been dedicated. They protect not only our God-given and alienable rights, but they protect our county. So we do appreciate their service. Couple of things, I did catch up, a little conversation with our deputy who was seriously injured in the car crash back in, last year, seven, eight months back, Deputy Wes Ludiker. Time and again, I get in touch with him and see how he and his wife are doing and how he's recovering. He's all right, but at the same time, not doing very well in many ways, you know? So please remember him in your prayers. That's all I'm going to say for him, as it relates with him. That's all I have today with my committee reports. And like I said, I just really truly enjoy working with our committees because they're always keeping us busy. And I love bringing it back on the table for our Board of Commissioners and taxpayers, letting you know how much work we anticipate and what work is being done. Another quick thing I wanted to talk about is, it was brought to my attention the other day that, this is in regards with the summer property tax deferment bills. It was vetoed. And I thought I'll get a little bit of clarification in regards with that. Now, this bill, it talked a little bit that would have, this bill that would have allowed individuals and businesses to delay, you know, without penalty for their 2020 property tax. And their payments were vetoed by the governor, apparently, this week. And so in her veto, Governor Whitmer cited constitutional reasons, apparently, and overwhelming opposition from schools and local units of government. But then I believe that it was fought after, and the bill that has passed the Senate and is currently in the House, and it's an agreement with the administration that can be reached. So the bill being passed by the House and sent to the governor to the week of July 2020. I believe what I have come to understand is if she signs immediately the bill, it'll be a very short notice window and some jurisdiction for some qualified taxpayers. And to submit their applications before their property tax bills are due. So the deadline apparently says July 20th, 2020. So just to kind of bring you.
Is there a one for applying?
Yes, July 20, 2020.
I wonder if it was August 28th.
Is that correct? Yeah, this is just fresh out of the oven, if I may. And so this is something, it's brought to my notice, and I thought, I'm glad that you, are you on top of that? Were you able to get that information? So that is all with my reports. If there's any question, I'd be happy to answer.
I just want to clarify that with Stephanie. So they can apply for a delay in paying the taxes, but they have to apply by August?
That's what's on there right now.
Okay.
But it looks like because of the timeframe, that it's not going to be feasible to do.
Okay.
It's what we talked about yesterday at our phone conference involving Treasures and Nativities.
Right.
So it probably is what that relief is not going to happen, probably.
That's right.
Okay.
If he's the good word, right? I agree.
Stephanie, that's something totally separate from the usual deferment that.
Correct. It would be a named deferment, basically, a one-time deal.
Okay.
One time, that's right.
So people who are in issues can still approach you on a one-on-one basis to work out.
I'm sorry, it's right here.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, I tell people they can make payment plans on their own.
Right.
Until that third year is when I discuss payment plans for avoiding foreclosure.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure.
Thanks, Steph.
And just, just so everybody understands my comment, there's a standard deferment that's been in place for a number of years. And there's an agricultural part of it. And quite often, we defer the summer and just pay it all at the end of the year.
Okay.
So that we pay a lump sum. And it's, I think that form normally has to be in by September.
Then I don't know.
And I can't remember, I've got it wrote down at home.
But there is, that goes to the township, so I don't memorize that.
Right. You're right, that goes to the township. Yep, yep. But it applies to.
Too many bags.
Yep.
That's right.
But it.
Too many to keep up.
There's actually different categories on here.
That's right.
Agriculture is one of them, just so that we can bunch it together.
That's right.
There's the bad friends, and then there's poverty as well.
Yep.
That's right. And I think I'm aware of the agriculture, like you just mentioned, because every township deals with that. And I think it is September end, if I'm not mistaken. But I can get that frame of time, if you would like, for you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I just got to dig the form, I got it at home.
That's right, that's right.
So, all right. Any other questions or comments for Namrata? Thank you.
One final one, my apologies. One really quick one was when I was at the meeting of the Medical Examiner Investigation, just to put it out there in this COVID-19, if somebody is looking for a job, with investigator job, I put this up from Sarah Palamani, the coordinator. They're always looking for medical examiner investigators, just so you know. And like I said, this is, you know, very, job that is a very calling job, a very noble job. And like I said, Hillsdale County, they're always looking for somebody who has, you know, some kind of background of the fire department or the EMS. Like I said, they're welcome to apply. And it's a part-time, but again, it's a very, it's a great job, very desirable job. Most people love it. And it's, like I said, Hillsdale County is always in need. And so if you would like some more information, I would be happy to share this with you. I have a two-page requirement for it, but it's not that very, you know, difficult to apply. If you're interested in the medical examiner investigator position, it's a very calling job, very demanding job, so.
I believe there should still be applications at the clerk's office, or at least there was at one point in time.
Oh, is that right? And I'd be happy to give copies to the clerk's office today and to Jody. I'd be happy to provide. This one just has a, just a couple of general statement of duties, what exactly it is, and, you know, the kind of desirable education experience, that's it. You have to have a love for the job, and training is available, so.
Okay, Julie?
On to me?
You're up.
At the last meeting, I had brought forth bids for the repair of the bathroom at the Park House.
Yes.
And we, the board asked Randy and I to go tour that house. That's why I asked him to come up today and determine, you know, what would be the best action to take because some of those quotes were just to, for a repair. That definitely needs to be done. And then the other quotes were to redo the entire bathroom, okay? So we did go take a look at the house. I don't know, Randy, if you want to make comments, or you want me just to go ahead and? Okay, so we looked at that, well, he's more qualified as, you know, contracts facilities director. But I'm a Realtor, so I'll take it from there. So the house, I mean, we just put money in the roof and the gutters. The siding's good. I mean, structurally, the house is very sound. We didn't see any problems with that. The bathroom does need to be repaired, minimal. There is an area of flooring around the toilet that has, you know, there's obviously been a small leak or something's happening there that has to be repaired, and possibly we need a new toilet in that bathroom. At this point in time, I, we feel like that the house, yes, it will need some work. But if we put $10,000 to $20,000 in it over the next few years to, you know, completely update it on the inside, the outside is in good condition. So on the inside, then the house should be set to be able to be rented for a higher, much higher amount, and for, you know, the next 15 years after that. So it'd pay for itself, you know, in two to three years for the work we have to put into it. And then after that, we would just be getting income from it. And so we think that at this point in time, that we agree that just the bathroom should be repaired, and that we should go forward with that bid that was for.
Was it $1,955 for the stove, is it?
Yes.
Okay, because I knew you had.
We should go ahead and move forward with that. And then also, I emailed you this morning, the bids for the stove, okay? We started a capital improvements, you know, fund at the parks, but it's only started since January, and we only put in $50 a month. So the original idea, we have about $350 in there right now, was to see if we couldn't get a kind of certified used stove from Brad's Pines, because a lot of times he has those. He's our only local appliance dealer. He does not have any of those in stock. So therefore, that's not really an option at this point. So we got four quotes on new electric stoves, basic, you know, white stove. And they range from $499 to $599 to obtain that. Right now, the stove, I think, has like one burner that works, and that's it. The oven doesn't work, the whole rest of the thing doesn't work, just one burner. And it's very old.
Yeah. It's Swick Appliance. Swick TV and Appliance and Coldwater quite often have some used stuff.
They do, but I don't think you're going to see it, much different in pricing. Whether you go with, you know, recertified or a brand new, and you're talking maybe $100 difference, so.
By the time they would bring it over and install and?
I mean, it's not an issue for me to pick it up. I live, you know, within probably 15 minutes of it. But so it's not an issue for me to pick it up, bring it over. But, you know, I don't think you're going to see any huge savings.
Well, I guess I'm just wondering if anybody that reached out to them, because you indicated Brad's was the only one in town, and he doesn't have one.
Right. We didn't, we didn't check with them. But we felt like, I mean, it's not like some, like we can go to a garage sale and just pick up a stove. I don't, I don't think that's appropriate for the situation. So we, you know, we were hoping Brad, like I said, he does, from time to time, you know, have good stoves in there. But he didn't have anything, and so we didn't go outside the county to look.
And the appliances at Home Depot are pretty well depleted. They're doing everything basically online right now. So you can get one, can get it ordered, can get it delivered there. But it's going to take probably a few weeks to do it, so it just depends.
What's going on with appliances right now? Is this COVID-19?
Well, when it comes to the refrigerators and freezers, everybody panicked like they did the toilet paper.
Oh, is that right?
Because I'm trying to buy a dishwasher right now. And it's like, there aren't any, there aren't any dishwasher.
I don't think they were essential employ, you know what I mean? So like assembly and every, well, I'm just saying, you know, I don't know what the situations were with assembly and, you know, working.
I've never heard of that before, calling around, and we're, we don't have any, what?
I personally bought one here a week ago, and I had to hunt for two days to find one in stock and have it shipped. And it's just next to impossible to find a chest freezer right now.
Well, I have a question, Commissioner Gaines. And I was thinking, if we can start with first things first, as in just the repair for now, and see whenever the stove is available at some point, I guess. Don't want to put too many eggs in one basket. If the toilet just seems like it's necessary, the flooring is broken and.
That means taking the flakes straight away. It's more.
If I may interject, you know, this is a renter, and they rented the house with the thought of having a working stove. It's not their fault, it's ours at this point. So, you know, my feeling is you take care of your renter and live up to our obligation on it.
And I just.
It's our obligation, it's not theirs.
Yeah, and I just want to state that she's a long-term renter.
Yep.
You know, and she hasn't asked us to do a lot. That's kind of why things are in the state they are. She's not a complainer, you know?
Well, you see, Stephanie, she could withhold her rent for not having the stove. My goodness, what's her?
Oh, so it is broken, it's not working.
Yeah, one burner.
One burner.
So, I mean, that's what we found when we went there.
It's not a hot plate right now.
Right, right, right.
Okay, so what was the, so what was the bid for the bathroom?
The bid for the bathroom is $1,955.
$1,955.
Yep.
And that was stalls?
Yes.
And that was to repair the bathroom and an new toilet?
Toilet, new toilet, is it?
Yes.
Replace the toilet or the whole flooring? Or just repair certain?
No, it says repair the flooring, and then it says install. Well, it says reinstall toilet.
Reinstall, okay, so need a new toilet then?
Well, if they're going to reinstall it, they're just going to use the same one. The toilet's not bad. But then, once they redo the floor, they'll have to reinstall.
There's parts of the toilet that are bad, but they can replace those and then reinstall. I beg your pardon.
Anytime you move a toilet, there's certain things that have to be replaced, like the wax seal and some of the bolts and so on.
So you need $499 to $599 for the stove, and another $1,955 for the bathroom and the toilet and that. And then they've got $350 in their CIP. So where's the rest of the money going to come from?
Well, there's, since Derek's not up here, I'm not. I know we've got some in the.
We have, we have some.
Two different accounts, there's some money. I don't know which one Derek would want to pull it out of, but.
We have some in our CIP, too.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think it'll come out of the capital improvement plan.
So it looks like we're, are you going to transfer $2100 from the CIP? Because we have $350 already in there? Or are we going to run it with Derek first of how much?
I think we need to make a motion today.
We need to make a motion to get this done, it's, you know?
Why don't we make a motion, Julie?
Okay. So I.
Do you need a separate one for each one of these, or you want it all in one, Mark?
It's all for the same house. I don't see any reason why you can't bundle it.
Yes. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve the bathroom repair of $1,955 by stole construction for the bathroom of the Park House. And then also. and then also the purchase of the four hundred ninety-nine dollar stove from Brad's Appliance.
I second that.
Yeah, but wait a minute, we...
And then you want me to add?
Yeah.
That the, the parks will use their three hundred fifty dollars toward the total purchase, which then will leave us...
Whatever that is.
Whatever, I didn't do the math on that.
Twenty-one oh four.
Okay, so the total will be twenty-one hundred and four dollars?
That'll come out of the...
That'll come out of the, our CIP.
Yeah.
And, and they'll pay their three fifty out of theirs.
Okay.
For the total, for the total cost.
Well, they'll know I respect it, whichever.
It's a one motion, I support that, that's fine.
How we doing, Jody?
Sorry, Jody.
Nope. To prove the bathroom repairs at nineteen thousand fifty-five dollars by stole...
No.
One thousand.
One thousand nine hundred and fifty-five.
Okay, one thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars by stole construction for the Park House and four hundred ninety-nine dollar stove from Brad's Appliance. Park uses their three hundred fifty dollars from capital improvement and we cover the twenty-one oh four from capital, our capital improvement.
That's good.
Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Gas or electric stove?
Electric.
Okay, electric.
Not that it makes any difference as far as...
Sorry, I meant to ask that first.
Yeah, now it's electric.
Okay, any further discussion? I think it's been pretty well explained.
Now Brad's has the stove, has it in stock?
Well, he gave some specs and I don't know, it's, well, if he doesn't, we're gonna order it and we'll get it when we get it.
Okay.
I mean...
So we will order it from Brad's Appliance when he, and when he does have it then, okay. Okay.
Okay. Anything else? All those are fair, signify the same, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
I'm also gonna have this come back as a follow-up resolution under the consent agenda.
Okay.
Yes, at the next meeting.
And no changes?
No, and no changes, no. No, that's why it's in the consent agenda.
Jody read it back to you, so if you're gonna change, you change now.
I have to change it now, now. So hopefully no changes, Jody. Not by me, Jody.
Strike that word, hopefully.
I know, okay. Not by me, I'm, I'm just saying.
Okay, please continue.
I just want to go back to Mr. Duke's presentation. I would like to bring back a motion to the next meeting to work with them to join Region Two for a year. You know, he said we can pay approximately three thousand dollars of the twelve this year and then pay the remaining part for the dues in next year's budget. I think we can find that, I think that the timing is right for us to rejoin. Forty-five percent, basically, of the institutions in the county are currently members and we have a lot on our plate going forward if we want to try to apply for these DNR grants for the parks. You know, that could be substantial money. And I know Bob Godfrey, the chairperson of the Parks Board, did research, you know, trying to just hire a grant writer on their own and that was gonna cost twelve to fifteen thousand dollars minimum. Just, oh, just for that. So it's, the value is there and we can join for a year, get these major things done that we need, helping us with the master plan, helping us with the recreation plan and the DNR grants. And then if the board next year doesn't think the value's there, they don't have to join next year. But I think the timing is right that we need to consider to do that.
So Julie, if I may?
Yes.
Bob sent me a message.
Okay.
Says, "I can't be at the meeting today, but really believe it would be beneficial for the county and the parks to join Region Two. I believe they could do most of our five-year plan. I know they have helped a lot of other counties. Thank you, Bob Godfrey." So...
I mean, and I was at Litchfield Township last night. I, I spoke a little bit about that Steve Duke would be speaking today and they're, they're a member and they very much support it. You saw Doug Terry was here from the city of Litchfield, Jeff Gray supports it. Sue was here from the EVP, they participate, you know, I mean, it's, I think it's, it's time that we get back in the game in this and, you know, participate in regional planning. It's, it saves everybody money when you do that.
When you have a grant, especially for your parks, because that was a major concern that was brought up last night.
Those DNR grants, they're, a lot of them are big money, but the only way you can get them is if you have a proper thing and, you know, Steve and I talked about this and he talked about it here, you know, we are more than likely to obtain grants and large ones because we haven't applied for anything in over twenty-five years.
Well, the only thing I can say is, you know, I don't have a problem when you bring in something back, but do your homework with the finance committee, Bruce and Ruth.
That's important, most of all.
And we've gotta know where the money's coming from.
Yeah, I would say a couple, a couple things about this. Number one, we've talked about this a lot and I think that, that we need to do our due diligence and we need to talk to Nick about historical perspective and why we haven't been a member in the past. And we also need to do our due diligence with this, he gave us a whole list. I would contact some of these places and ask them what they think is their membership beneficial.
Well, I've already done that.
We need to do our, we need to do our due diligence.
You guys can do it on your own.
This has not been, this has not been, this has not been budgeted. There's nothing in the budget for this right now. So if we decide to do it, it would be in next year's budget. So it's not something that we can do right now. And now would this replace the secretary, we have the secretary, Kim Jackson, right now, right? So this would, we wouldn't need her anymore if we went.
It depends, we, I mean, that'd be a decision that we would have to look at.
How much are we paying her?
Yeah, I told you, we'll have to answer for that.
I think between seven and eight thousand with, for, for the one day a week and being the contact in the county.
I'll talk to Bruce about this and, and do a little bit of due diligence. I think we need to talk to Nick.
I'll, I'll call, I'll call Steve back too and see what, but that's one of the reasons why he came in now, because we're in the budget process for next year and I understand that our year doesn't coincide with theirs. Maybe we can work something out where we can just pay them the whole thing in January or something. I mean, seem to be kind of flexible about how we could, how we could do it. So I will follow up on that also.
Okay, I'll, I'll do a little, I'll talk to Nick and I'll talk to...
More information that can be funneled out to the rest of us in the meantime is best because if we don't have a lot of information prior to the discussion next meeting, it, it won't go well.
Right, well, we're not gonna be ready to make the decision at the next meeting.
No.
That's too, that's too, too fast.
But a lot of information needs to be obtained so that we can, you know, decide with best information.
And, and Mr. Chair, if I may, you know, I, I would, like I said, I would like to do the due diligence like you just suggested. I mean, it's, it's really a good program, I indicated and Mr. Duke came in here, there are perks, but again, we're in a different situation right now with the COVID-19 incident. So with all of that in place, what can we afford? And what can we do and what can these grants actually avail for our parks? Because that's, that was the main topic last time, I remember. See what's there in the budget to be prepared for next year. And if you were to go for the next year, then see for one year how this is work out. So again, we have to do a little bit of homework research, but it's a good program. I've been involved in it for years, but as township of Somerset, we have done major work all by ourselves. All the legwork was done. I would like to say Region Two did not do any much work, except it goes to the Region Two for recommendation, but there are perks and grants and not all the time. Now Somerset is more of the urban rural types, lake suburban and et cetera districts, but in a, on a county basis, we have the Jonesville Park Recreation. So I think it's best to do a little bit more vast homework on it and see, and if we were to pursue it, then see for the next year and then go for one year and see how that works for us.
Now, we, if we would, if we would, we talked about this before. We have a planning commission ordinance that was written back when I was on the planning commission and when that sunsets again, would that, then we wouldn't have a local Hillsdale County Planning Commission anymore because we would be a member of Region Two. We talked, we, we talked about all this when I was on the planning commission.
You still have a local...
Planning Commission, we would have to decide, I think that sunsets next year, so the board would have to decide if they're going to continue or let it sunset.
Because the, because the argument that was made when I was on, when we discussed this was the members of the planning commission at that time wanted to keep local control and they didn't want, they didn't want to have a, they didn't want to join Region Two because they wanted to maintain local control.
And I'm all for local...
When does the planning commission, when does that ordinance, um, sunset again?
July twenty twenty-one.
July of twenty-one.
Yeah.
And that is true.
So there's time to...
I would like to concur with Commissioner Brown on that, that there is that feedback of keeping it local, but at the same time, what this brings about is how do we take care of the parks and the recreation as it relates with that? So those are the benefits for that if we were to pursue, like I said, do the due diligence.
We still have control over what, what happens and what we apply for and what we do. So it is local control, it's not like they come in and take over. It's, that's not how it works.
Like I say, a lot of information's gotta be looked over, a lot of questions need to be asked, so. And I'm gonna make a point of talking to Doug Terry and Sue in the meantime myself, so.
Jeff Gray's another really good resource on that.
All right, what else you have to say?
Let's see, Ruth already talked about Michigan Works. The Ambulance Association, we did meet, we have the reports in, the second quarter reports Bruce referred to, readings and the, the second quarter payments will be going out tomorrow, I believe it's the fifteenth. Let's see, what else? We talked about the parks, talked about the COVID funds webinar, I, that, the thing that Bruce was talking about, I also, I had signed up for it because I didn't know who all signed up and so I listened to that. And then also I was in Moscow for Litchfield and CBO Townships over the last couple of weeks and last night at the CBO Township meeting, none of my townships have opted in or cities have opted in to the marijuana things, but it looks like the CBOs probably is gonna, they, they decided to get with the lawyer and work in the ordinance and move in that direction most likely, so.
To sign in for it?
Yes, yes, so. That's my report, unless anybody has questions about anything else. David, sorry, I knew you were there and I'm like, I need to mention David since he came in and then I, I forgot, I apologize. I saw you once and then...
Okay, I wanted to, I gave you quite a list last meeting and I wanted to bring you up on a couple of them. The AT&amp;T contract is expiring and I'm not happy with the numbers that I'm getting from AT&amp;T at all. They're talking minimum of twenty-one hundred dollars a month, which is not, not in the wheelhouse of where I want it to be. So I'm trying to figure out how fast we can get some changes made and not do that contract, but it's, I may have to sign it for a year again anyway just because we can't get everything connected in time.
Is that through Mac, what is it, the BILDA or what?
No, 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 no.
It's not the same?
No, the BILDA is a whole nother thing. They're the audit people that claim they can save you tons of money and they can't. All it does is cost you.
Okay, all right.
A new server, I am gonna order that this week. I've got everybody on board to split that. It's twenty-one thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars and ninety-two cents. That does not include the software, that is the hardware only, but that should get us by for another five to eight years for the BSNA system as far as the hardware. I'm looking at three-year deals for the spam filters and the backup system. I'm very concerned with our backup right now because the number of attacks that we are seeing on the firewall right now has increased substantially. It's been quiet four, five days, but that's like waiting for lightning to strike. So I, I, we have got to improve our backup systems and so I'm moving forward with that. Not real happy with dollar numbers there, but Saint Joe County is using a service that gets them off-site and I had a very good demo with them. I'm kind of moving that direction right at the moment, but they're waiting on some sizing numbers, how much storage we need before they give me a final product. And then one of the things the auditors had in their audit report last year was to do a penetration test. I've actually got a company that is willing to do vulnerability scans for a year, both externally and internally for us. I don't wanna get into all the particulars of the weeds in a public meeting because of the security involved with that, but it's not cheap. We're looking at about four thousand dollars a year to do that. But I did hit something good this last two weeks. The MSI SAP, which is funded entirely through the Homeland Security at federal level, they've come up with a new program that allows us to do a couple of things and it's a pilot phase right now and it's free. So I signed us up and put that in place, so we'll see if that helps us at all.
That's good.
Over the next, it goes until June of next year, so we'll, we'll see how it goes and whether or not they have enough to get the continuation funding from Homeland Security. I hope that they do. So that, if you've got any questions about those three items or those five items, let me know. Otherwise, I'm spending some money, but we've gotta do it and I'm trying to stay within budget, but it ain't easy, folks, as you've seen with the things you're buying for the parks. The server quote, I was just flabbergasted at. That is one of my regular vendors. The next closest quote was thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Oh my, from twenty-one to thirty-seven?
Uh huh.
Wow.
And so I was like, we're gonna do it before it goes away.
Yes.
That's all I can get, so. All right, questions?
Good job.
Thanks, David, it's really appreciated.
Appreciate it.
If I can throw two things out quickly also. One is you should talk with Derek about your terminology, capital improvement fund versus capital expenses. There's a differentiation within the bookkeeping, a big one. So be cognizant of that. Capital expenses come out of the general fund, capital improvement is a separate fund.
Right, absolutely, completely, entirely different.
Yeah, so be, be aware.
Got it, thanks.
And to Ruth's point about the Region Two plan, yes, there's a lot of history there. You need to be aware of it before you make decisions because in the early days, the GIS, I was involved with that too, so. When we were getting bills for a hundred and twenty-one dollars an hour of basically answering the phone, that didn't set real well, so. Okay, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Any comments or questions for Julie? Okay, moving right along. We've already done Bruce's report, we've already discussed the Lifeways, which I will follow up on. I sent to you the Cole Stoker document on the PO twenty twenty dash one forty-seven.
I sent to you the Cole Stoker document on the EO 2020-147, which now mandates that individuals wear face coverings over their nose and mouth in most public spaces, et cetera, et cetera. So I thought Cole Stoker did a good job of providing that. It'd be nuts, but do you want me to send you the digital copy?
I don't care. I'll end up putting it off if you send me digital.
There, you can have that one. How's that? So it reinforces what we've been attempting to do as far as the screeners, the masks, et cetera. It actually puts a little more teeth in it. I know Doug and I have talked about it, you know, there again, who's going to enforce it? And until the AG's office and the state police do their job, the locals are not going to be too overexcited about enforcement. I've noticed on social media several different sheriffs speaking out against it as far as the enforcement. It just creates a mess because really it's got to come down from the AG's office. That's my two cents on that, but you know, at least we've got the Cole Stoker explanation and that came via Mac. And I sent that out to, I believe I sent that out to all department heads and elected as well. Yeah, thank you, Jeff.
I didn't read it all, but yeah.
I see Bob it back there, so I appreciate it. Some of this stuff I send out so much to others that I forget what I have or have not. And I know I've been trying to send out the updates from the Health Department as well.
That's true.
And so the update that I sent you all yesterday from Becky is definitely more current than the one that Marty had put in the packet from over a week ago. But so just for everyone that's here, total cases as of yesterday for Branch County was 253, Hillsdale County 194, and St. Joe County has jumped up to 350. New cases for Branch yesterday was one, Hillsdale two, and St. Joe eight. Now, St. Joe County and Branch County for that matter lagged behind Hillsdale for quite some time. And now they've surpassed us. And I think part of it is, there is a lot of folks in Branch County that work across the line in Indiana. And Indiana, Elkhart County in particular is having quite proud. They have over a thousand cases in their county alone.
Oh, wow.
So, you know, there's some of it being transmitted that way.
Sure. Is it in the Amish or why do they have so many work?
There is some in the Amish. I'm not sure of the exact numbers within the Amish communities within Branch and St. Joe, but I do know that it has finally infiltrated. And one of the ways through contact tracing, they found that it's gotten there was, at least in one incident, the driver that transports them had, didn't know it and transferred it to the Amish city it was, you know, transporting. So, you know, just because it's Amish, they're not immune, so.
Right.
But I do think that St. Joseph County has had a problem with large gatherings and parties and things like that, and that's been a huge cause for their spike. I'm sure you've noticed on the news this morning, there was some sort of house party probably somewhere near U of M. But there's a huge number of cases coming from that, much like the bar in Lansing. Harper's ended up, I don't know what the last number is, but the most recent number I heard, there was 160 cases from that.
Yeah. It's exponentially multiplying.
So, you know, when you get these gatherings, that's what happens. And then not only does it spread within that confine, but then those people that take it home, spread it to others with their siblings. So it just becomes a.
Mr. Chair, are there any recovery reports as well of the folks who had any, by the Health Department?
Not by our local Health Department. The state has been releasing some healthier recoveries. I think the last number I saw at the state level was there was like 65,000 total recoveries. The Health Department has not been sending that out and I'm not even sure if Becky's got a good handle on that. Because some of these that self-isolate at home and recover at home, that never gets reported back to your local Health Department.
Right.
And quite frankly, I'm not sure it gets reported to the state.
Correct.
So those numbers are a little, you know, questionable, but there are a lot of recoveries happening and yes, I know people would like to hear that number versus the number of cases, but it's a hard target to.
Hard target, right.
Yep. Medical care DHS meeting is Thursday. I have not gotten any new information from last meeting, but as far as I know, medical care is still COVID-free.
Okay.
We have, you know, we've had, we kind of hit the bottom and now we're on the upturn. We've actually received a clean bill of health. So we're actually, medical care facility is accepting new admissions now.
What about visitors?
No visitors.
No visitors, okay.
No visitors. The timetable for that is unknown. And quite frankly, I think, I'd have to go back and double check the long list of EOs, but if I recall correctly, there is still an active EO that forbids visitors.
Right, that's EO 147 that just came up the other day, just a couple of days.
No, 147 is under Mass.
Is there another new one?
Visitors, visitors in med care is covered under another one.
Is it one before the 147?
Yes.
Okay, before that, right.
Yeah, it's one before that, but I, you know, I mean, she's up to one, I think she's up to 150 now.
Oh my.
So, you know, now some of them have been rescinded or superseded, but you know, it's just keeping up on, yeah, Doug sent me just last night, 150.
Or 150.
And I haven't even opened 150 yet, so I'm not even sure what 150 is.
So she has released the 150 then?
Yeah, yeah. So we're up to 150.
Right.
It was kind of a joke with Doug and I that she was shooting to get to 100.
Right.
Well, she went past that. Now the joke was is that he was, she was aiming for 150. Well, she's made it, so.
She made it, right.
So I don't know. And you know, I guess while we're talking about EOs, and I know Senator Shurkey made a comment at the Republican meeting because somebody brought it up about these EOs, they are lawful orders until such time that the court deems them not. And so anybody that thinks these EOs don't need to be followed is dead wrong. Now, the bigger problem is, is as I've already mentioned, the enforcement issue, okay? But any elected official's got to abide by them because at the end of the day, until the court deems otherwise, which yes, there are several that are being challenged.
Challenged.
Thank you. Through the courts, until the court rules, these are the order of the day and the law of the day. And quite frankly, Judge Liston and I have had that discussion. These are, especially this one in the mask, is, you know, there's actually written into it, a punitive fine if you don't obey, so.
The main thing is, this is not a hoax. I mean, this COVID-19, and that's the, I mean, I know the question comes about enforcement. I think it's a personal liability. It's a personal recognition of the understanding that maybe we may not be, but an elderly could be more vulnerable. So I think this is not a hoax. I mean, we've got to understand this is serious.
Well, there was, and I wish I could try to find the article again, but it was, you know, on one of the news services online, but there's a family in New Jersey that between, they lost their mother, they lost two siblings, and then there was two other, can't remember whether it was grandchildren or what, but anyways, the total of five members of this family have died to COVID. And it's a fairly large family, but they didn't necessarily take it seriously. It's very, they're very frank in the article, in the interview, that, you know, they still met, even though they lived, you know, kind of different places, they still met for Sunday or once a month, you know, as a big family because that was part of their heritage. Well, now they wish they had enough.
Also, they spread it then.
They spread it amongst themselves. They spread it amongst themselves. And partly because, you know, they may or may not have taken it as seriously as they should have. But now their message is, is take it serious, folks, because this is real. And we're living with the loss of five of our family members. And they're doing everything they can and several members of their family have recovered. And one of the, one of the gals in the family, she's going in, I think it said every 10 days and having her blood, they're taking her plasma because she recovered. And so they're collecting her antibodies. And there's a couple other members that are planning on doing it because they want to help people now so that other families don't have to deal with the loss that they've dealt with. So yes, it is very real, but you know, until you've dealt with it personally, it may or may not get your attention as much as it should. And that'd be a terrible way to have to make you be more serious is to deal with it, you know, but be it as it may. One last thought. Bruce has been trying to get department heads elected to give them their wish list as far as five-year plan. He's only gotten a couple, two or three of those. We need to get those in because that's an integral part of us establishing a priority list for the capital improvement money and future monies. And that's something that I know him and I have talked about, and I know he's talked to Ruth about putting together something that we can have at least as a projection of needs, whether it be a roof or whether it be, you know, update of computers or whatever the situation. We've got to have at least a map.
Land, that's right.
Yep, yep. So that's all I have unless someone has a question. Okay. We're going to be out of here shortly, folks. Public comment.
Wake up, Jack.
How's Jack? You there?
Not too bad.
Been cooler this week, or at least it is right now.
My name's Jack McLean. I'm on the Hillsdale County Planning Commission, which shine and joy. I wish you guys could read that ordinance. And I don't know if any of you can break it up right now to read it, but kind of the way I read it, there's like three people that can't be on it that are on it because it says that you can't run for an office and be on the board. And I don't know if I was set up to keep your competition away from you or whatever, but it just right now, there's, like I said, there's like three people that can't even be on the board that are on the board. So, and I definitely don't need any bad publicity because, you know, I'm on the board, but yet I can do a write-in for an office or something. So I don't know if that's legal or not. I don't know. I just.
I'll look into it.
Yeah.
Because I'm the one that recruited a lot of those people that are on there and filled a lot of those seats before. I think I did a bit of pushing.
Can any of you look it up or not?
I will. I can't look it up right now, but I will look into it.
I am aware of it. Sorry, you know, we're not allowed to speak, but I'm aware of that and I think that's the way the ordinance is, but again, we have a hard time recruiting people.
I'll look into it.
Yeah. Ruth will look into it and let us all know, please.
I will.
Okay, because I would like to know soon. I mean, because, you know, I don't want to be in violation for one thing and I could be marred, I suppose, if that's the case, you know, and then vote.
I'll get a copy and maybe we can talk about it tonight at the Township Meeting. I'll send it to her today and then we'll.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. Anyone else?
I just wanted to make you all aware that I am Kathy Schmidt. I am running for the District 2 commissioner's seat, so, and that's all, the reason I'm attending is just to get a flavor for what you do and how it's done, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Anything else for us today, Stephanie? Thank you. Additional business, Ruth?
No, sir.
Julie?
No.
Camilla?
Well, I just want to thank everybody. It was, I think it was a really great meeting. Just during these trying times, I know a lot of us, you know, can't gather or anything, but I think it's important that we check on our neighbors, you know, elderly neighbors, especially when it gets warm or, you know, just check based on people. If you haven't seen somebody out for a long time and they're elderly, living by themselves, you know, check on them with a phone call or something or a quick hi from outside, you know, that kind of thing. So just be a good neighbor about that. That's it.
So a good comment considering the heat that we've had and the heat that's forthcoming, so.
Yes.
With that, we stand adjourned and thank you all.
Thank you.